Branca Telly, Conwell, Gardner, Gray, Griffin, Hairston, Bashir Jones, Joe Jones, Casey, McCormack, Mooney, Polensick, Santana, Sly, Spencer. You have a call, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk, will you please dispense with the Journal?
By Councilmember Sly, that the reading of the minutes of the last meeting be dispensed with the Journal approved, seconded by Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you. At this point, at this portion, we'll begin public comment. Is Antoine Tolbert available, please? I'm afraid we don't have substitutions.
Hey, I'm Ms. Rice. I'm the mother of Tamir. If everybody know me, hello, everybody, City Council. What I want to say is, we are working diligently to get Issue 24 passed, and we would like Issue 24 to be passed, okay? Also, folks that are not on ballot with this, I would see us, I would, I would think it would be something wrong with you all. We need a change in this city, you know? And Issue 24 is a start. So I would ask that everybody support Issue 24. It will not take no power away from no mayor. It will not defund the police, if that's what folks is thinking. You have to read the Charter to understand the recommendations that, that the mayor has to follow. And Issue 24 will save lives. Issue 24 will be a start to a better Cleveland. I hear that we talk about a better Cleveland every day, and it can start with Issue 24. Also, I will hope that you all, under the leadership that you all have shown, and I know some of y'all are new, but some of y'all are old, y'all have failed the community, and some of these communities y'all have failed. Yes, y'all have. Also, with the leadership of Frank Jackson, he has failed as well. Me and President Kelly, we had a talk earlier today. Okay, I'm gonna wrap it up.
So I would also ask that anybody who can do public comment-
We are not tragedy pimps. Under that leadership, let me just tell you, President Kelly, you know what he said on TV? He called us tragedy pimps. You know it wasn't right. Under that leadership, it is a failure for our community. So I, under that leadership, I would think that y'all would have your own mind-
Okay, okay, so, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask- I'm going to ask all those that are here for public comment to please review the rules of public comment before, before you start. We don't have substitutions. We don't have comment on issues, and we don't have, we don't, we don't entertain personal attacks on either the mayor or members of the body. So I just ask those that are here for public comment, we want to hear from you. We want to do so respectfully. We, we started this process for you, so let's please all respect one another. And with that, I'd like to call to the, to the mic, Mr. Kareem Hinton, please.
So I'll make it quick. I want to tell a quick story. There was a young man named Mark. He was having a mental health episode. He was, his parents called the police, or called emergency services. They dispatched the police. Police got there. They noticed that he was having a mental health episode. They told the family they were going to take him to the diversion center. He was not taken to the diversion center. He was taken to the county jail. Inside the county jail, inside of a month, that young man wound up in ICU. His family only found out that he was in ICU in the hospital because they were monitoring what was going on with him at court, because they weren't able to speak with him on the That's a problem. He should have never wound up in ICU with organ failure. The issues lie in the fact, we don't have to skip ahead, we just have to look at the fact that he shouldn't have been in there. I ask, what mechanism is in place to hold the officers who should have taken him to the diversion center accountable? This is why it's ridiculous when you have this resolution that's going against, and I'm not going to name the issue, because I heard you say we're not supposed to name Issue 24, but when you have that resolution that's going against it, that's the stuff, that's how we hold people accountable. They're not going to do it, but we need a mechanism in place to hold the people in place, I mean, to hold the people accountable that are responsible for that young man's near death. And I'm gonna give you a quick quote for you spiritual folk. "What will you give me, and I will deliver him unto you? And they got, and they gave him thirty pieces of silver." That's what Judas got for selling out Jesus. The significance of that price of thirty pieces of silver is that that's what a slave costs. So if you're accepting that thirty pieces of silver for selling out the community, you're a slave. Get on the right side of this, and I hope to see you not sign that resolution condemning that because the people deserve a right to at least vote on it. That's the will of the people, and you're ignoring that will of the people. Okay, you're against it. Doesn't matter if you're against it. This is what the people want. The people at least wanted it on the ballot, and you folks are against it being on the ballot? That's a problem. It's not about you. It's about the people, the people that elected you. So I'm hoping that you'll be on the right side of this and either abstain from voting on that resolution, or just be totally against that resolution.
Thank you. Ms. Yivanka Marie Hall-
One more piece. And the, and the ward that that came from, the person who sponsored it, Casey, his is the ward, one of the wards that's the least affected by police violence.
Thank you. Anita, if it wills. Thank you. Yivanka Marie Hall, please.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Do you realize that thousands of low-income families in Cleveland are going to lose out on the opportunity to receive tens of thousands of dollars? This is an excellent opportunity for you to help the families that you serve by making them aware of the child tax credit. The child tax credit program is for everyone, including people that never file taxes. Depending on how many children they have, their credit can be tens of thousands of dollars. Even if families are on public assistance, they qualify for the child child tax credit. This incentive provides twenty-five-hundred to three-thousand dollars for each child in the household. The great part is, it doesn't impact their benefits. So if you are currently receiving, if they are currently receiving public assistance, they can still receive the credit. They must apply before November the fifteenth. This is your opportunity to help low-income families in Cleveland. As we all know, Cleveland is the poorest city in the country. Our families are struggling, and we can all help them. Why bring this up in a discussion, in my discussion about lead? Having the dollars that are needed to have a down payment for a new place can be a game-changer for families that don't have the capital needed to move. For many of our families, this is a lifesaver they have been waiting for. For other low-income or no-income families that are living in owner-occupied homes, this is a chance for them to make a much-needed repair. The reality is, ninety percent of our homes in Cleveland, and eighty percent of the homes in the first ring suburbs, were built before 1978. For families that have recently found out their child or children are lead-poisoned, this is the money needed to purchase some healthy food options that don't fit into their normal budget. Many of our impoverished communities have iron deficiency, and iron deficiency increases the absorption rate of lead. These dollars are a game-changer for so many of our families that are living in old homes, are in poverty, and on Medicaid. I sent an email to all of you earlier today and asked that you share the child tax credit with your constituents. Thank you to Councilman Hairston, Councilwoman Polensick, and Councilman Gardner for acknowledging the receipt of the letter and promising to share with your constituents. You hold the seat of power, and this is the opportunity to use it to help families in Cleveland that are struggling. This is the opportunity for you to take a stand for your families in your communities.
Thank you. Kimberly Brown, please. Ms. Brown is not here. We could go to Mariah Crenshaw, please. Good evening.
I am born and bred Cleveland. Many of you know me, some don't. Some of you ran for office, and I gave you your first platform so that you can, the community can know who you are. My father, Stanley Tolliver, a legend in Cleveland, in the state of Ohio, believed in Cleveland, loved Cleveland. Me, I picked it up. I picked up the mantle, and I still continue the work my father did when it came to policing. I am utterly disappointed with the Cleveland Police Department, and have been for quite some time. I am not anti-police. I believe that we should be able to equip the men and women with the proper training that they can do the job we ask them to do. I obtained a civil protection order about three weeks ago, and against three people, and those three people have violated it at least a hundred times since I obtained it on September twentieth. I've been to the police department, and I've taken the evidence they violated it, and they tell me they will not go and arrest these people because it's a civil protection order. On the front of the civil protection order, it clearly says, if it's violated, the police are to arrest those people. But because they said it's a misdemeanor, they won't arrest them. So my life and my family's lives are in danger because of a social media frenzy. And we've often seen social media frenzies when CPOs, civil stalking orders occur, can turn into something very deadly. As a black woman in this community, who has dedicated my life to the community, I've worked in the housing court, Anita can tell you. I've worked everywhere in the city of Cleveland to try to make it a better place, and now I'm afraid to live in my city. And I hear no one wants to support changing the police department. Either it changes, or we all sink. And the bottom line is this: if you don't support the issue, stay quiet on it, and when you go to the voting box, don't vote for it, but let the people have their voice. Let the people decide what they want. Remember, it's "we, the people," not "you, the council." And we have to make a better stand, and we have to be able to hold all police accountable and expect them to fulfill the job that we hired them to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Martin, please.
Clevelanders do not believe you serve in our interests. How could we, when we had to fight tooth and nail just to allow ten of us the right to speak to you for three minutes once a week? Clevelanders do not believe you have any serious interest in police reform. If you did, then you would have done something by now, written your own legislation. Instead, you tout the consent decree, which only exists because the federal government sued the city of Cleveland for a pattern and practice of unconstitutional policing. As with the Q deal and our fight for fifteen, Clevelanders are trying to take power into our own hands. And as with those previous efforts, this body is trying to quash resident power. You claim to want resident engagement, yet now that there's a ballot measure with thousands of residents' signatures on it, you want to put, put a boot on the neck against it. It's anti-democratic. Let residents decide. Stay out of this. Vote no on Resolution 892-2021.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment section. Just for our viewing public, if there, if there, if there is such a thing, I would just clarify something. Counsel does not have the authority under the law to have this not be on the ballot. Just so we're clear, I've heard that a couple times. This is going to the ballot. That is not something the council has the authority nor the desire to do. So just, anybody who might have thought they heard something, please understand, that is the law, and, and that is the path we are on. Back to our legislative agenda, communications, please.
File number 927-2021, from Council President Kevin J. Kelly, Designating Alan Dreyer to Serve as Clerk of Council Pro Tem without objection for all matters requiring the clerk's signature on October fifteenth, 2021.
Condolence resolutions.
Resolutions of condolence by Councilmember Spencer for Jeanne Schrift.
Thank you. Additional condolences, Councilman Blaine Griffin.
I know everybody in the nation is doing it, but we definitely have to give a condolence resolution for Colin Powell.
Absolutely. Thank you. Please include everybody unless there's objection. Are there any other condolences? Will councilmembers please stand, please rise for a moment of silence? Thank you. Congratulatory resolutions.
Resolutions of recognition by Councilmember Branca Telly for Alma Kuri Corker. By Councilmember Branca Telly for Fareed Siddique. By Councilmember Branca Telly for Awatif Asad. By Councilmember Branca Telly for Dr. Khalid Issa. By Doc, by Councilmember Branca Telly for Dr. Michael Hannah.
First reading emergency resurances to be referred for administrative and committee review.
Ordinance 913-2021, by Councilmembers Branca Telly and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing the mayor and commissioner purchases and supplies to acquire the Mound School and property located at 5405 Mound Avenue for future redevelopment for the Department of Community Development, to convey the property to Morbidot Enterprises, Inc., or its designee, and to enter into an agreement between the city and the redeveloper. Ordinance 914-2021, by Councilmembers Joe Jones and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Port Control to enter into a lease agreement with Constant Aviation, Inc., for the lease of certain space and land located at 19200 Primary Road and 5200 Secondary Road at Cleveland-Hopkins International Airport, Department of Port Control, to provide aviation maintenance, repair, and overhaul services for a period of four years with one four-year option to renew exercisable by the Director of Port Control and to terminate the existing lease by way of concession agreement and license at these premises. Ordinance 915-2021, by Councilmembers Joe Jones and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Port Control to enter into one or more requirement contracts without competitive bidding with Wassa Equipment Company for services, maintenance, inspections, and parts necessary to maintain Wassa, Wassa snow removal equipment for the Division of Airports, Department of Port Control, for a period of two years with two one-year options to renew, the first of which shall be exercisable with additional legislative authority. Ordinance 916-2021, by Councilmember Kelly, to amend Section Four of Ordinance 194-2021 as amended relating to compensation for various classifications. Ordinance 917-2021, by Councilmembers Casey and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Public Utilities to employ one or more professional consultants necessary to design rehabilitation of automatic control systems at the Division of Water's Treatment Plants, secondary facilities, and in the distribution system for the Division of Water, Department of Public Utilities. Ordinance 918-2021, by Councilmembers Joe Jones and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing the purchase by lease, I'm sorry, purchase or lease by one or more contracts of one passenger boarding bridge, including installation, associated parts and appurtenances, and expenses relating to moving the passenger boarding bridge, which is being taken out of service for the Division of Airports, Department of Port Control, for a period of one year with three one-year options to renew, the second of which is exercisable with additional legislation. Ordinance 919-2021, by Councilmembers Griffin, Branca Telly, and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Economic Development to enter into a tax increment financing agreement with Fairmont Properties, or its designee, to provide for the development of a mixed-use project located at East 105th and Cedar, to provide for payments to the Cleveland Metropolitan School District, and to declare certain improvements to real property to be a public purpose. Ordinance 925-2021, by Councilmembers Santana, Griffin, McCormack, Bashir Jones, Spencer, Conwell, and Kelly, establishing a program to make feminine hygiene products free and accessible in all restrooms in City Hall and neighborhood youth and adult education resource and recreation centers, and authorizing the purchase by one or more standard purchase and requirement contracts of feminine hygiene products for the Division of Recreation and the Division of Property Management, Department of Public Works.
First reading emergency resurances to be passed.
Ordinance 920-2021, by Councilmember Hairston, amending the title and sections one and two of Ordinance 960-2020 as it pertains to authorizing Director of the Department of Public Health to enter into an agreement with Mumford, Inc., for the visual health services program through the use of Ward Ten Casino Revenue Funds. Ordinance 921-2021, by Councilmember Hairston, amending the title and section of Ordinance 958-2020 as it pertains to authorizing Director of Department of Public Health to enter into an agreement with the Catholic Charities, AKA Catholic Diocese of the city of Cleveland, St. Philip Neri, for the Community Health Worker Training Program through the use of Ward Ten Casino Revenue Funds. Ordinance 922-2021, by Councilmember Hairston, amending Section Two of Ordinance 723-2020 as it pertains to authorizing the Director of Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement with the Graffiti Heart Corporation for the Euclid Green mural project through the use of Ward Ten Casino Revenue Funds. Ordinance 923-2021, by Councilmember Branca Telly, authorizing Director of Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement with Tremont West Development Corporation for the Tremont Arts and Cultural, Cultural Program through the use of Ward Twelve Casino Revenue Funds. Ordinance 924-2021, by Councilmember Bashir Jones, authorizing Director of Department of Community Development to enter into agreement with Lexington Bell Community Center for the Code Enforcement Program through the use of Ward Seven Casino Revenue Funds.
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
By Councilmember Sly, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember Hairston.
Please call the roll.
Kelly, Bishop, Branca Telly, Conwell, Gardner, Gray, Griffin, Hairston, Bashir Jones, Joe Jones, Casey, McCormack, Mooney, Polensick, Santana, Sly, Spencer. Sixteen yeas.
Please call the roll on passage.
Kelly, Bishop, Branca Telly, Conwell, Gardner, Gray, Griffin, Hairston, Bashir Jones, Joe Jones, Casey, McCormack, Mooney, Polensick, Santana, Sly, Spencer. Sixteen yeas.
First reading emergency resolutions to be adopted.
Resolution 926-2021, by Councilmembers Kelly and Griff, by Councilmembers Kelly and Griffin, repealing Resolution 893-2021, adopted, adopted October eleventh, 2021. Resolution 934-2021, by Councilmember Gray, objecting to a new C2 liquor permit at 5611 Woodland Avenue. Resolution 935-2021, by Councilmember Branca Telly, objecting to the transfer of ownership of a D2, D2X, D3, D3A liquor permit to 2317 Dennison Avenue, first floor, basement, and patio.
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
By Councilmember Sly, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember Hairston.
Please call the roll.
Kelly, Bishop, Branca Telly, Conwell, Gardner, Gray, Griffin, Hairston, Bashir Jones, Joe Jones, Casey, McCormack, Mooney, Polensick, Santana, Sly, Spencer. Sixteen yeas.
Call the roll on adoption.
Kelly, Bishop, Branca Telly, Conwell, Gardner, Gray, Griffin, Hairston, Bashir Jones, Joe Jones, Casey, McCormack, Mooney, Polensick, Santana, Sly, Spencer. Sixteen yeas.
Second reading emergency resurances to be passed.
Ordinance 557-2021, by Councilmembers Spencer, Branca Telly, and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Economic Development to enter into a tax increment financing agreement with 5506 Detroit LLC, or its designee, to fund eligible project costs or projected debt for the financing of the Waverly and Oak Apartments project located at 56, 5506 Detroit Avenue, to provide for payments to the Cleveland Metropolitan School District, and to declare certain improvements to real property to be a public purpose. Ordinance 758-2021, by Councilmembers Bishop and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Public Works to apply for and accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Education for the 2022 Summer Food Service Program at Camp George Forbes, authorizing the purchase by requirement contract of breakfasts and lunch, and lunches, and of food, food products, beverages, condiments, and paper products to implement the grant for the Division of Recreation, Department of Public Works, and authorizing Director to contract with various nonprofit organizations for the implementation of the program. Ordinance 765-2021, by Councilmembers Griffin, Joe Jones, Hairston, Conwell, Bishop, and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Public Works to enter into a license agreement with Case Western Reserve University to use and occupy city-owned properties located within the Dome Brook Watershed, to be used as outdoor learning environments for students in the Environmental Heroes Program, and to conduct water quality sampling and field investigations for an initial term of three years, and automatically renewing year-to-year unless terminated by either party. Ordinance 767-2021, by Councilmembers Griffin and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Public Safety to renew lease, a lease agreement with LS 2018-24 with Cuyahoga County for the lease of certain space located on various floors of the justice system, of, I'm sorry, of the justice center, for a term of one year beginning October second, 2021. Ordinance 781-2021, by Councilmembers Griffin and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Public Safety to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Ohio Attorney General's Office Organized Crime Investigations Commission to investigate human trafficking, criminal activity, and authorize participation in eligible forfeiture sharing for the Division of Police, Department of Public Safety, for a term of one year, and automatically renewed from year-to-year unless terminated by either party. Ordinance 782-2021, by Councilmembers Bishop and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing the purchase by one or more standard and requirement contracts for the purchase, lease, or lease with option of purchase of various on-road vehicles, apparatus, and off-road equipment, cabs, bodies, and accessories, equipment, and other aftermarket items necessary to equip the vehicles authorized for their intended purposes, including vehicle rehabilitation, training, and inspections as needed for the Department of Port Control. Ordinance 840-2021, by Councilmembers Griffin, Branca Telly, and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Economic Development to enter into a loan agreement with Fairfax Renaissance Development Corporation, or its designee, to provide economic development assistance to partially finance the development of a residential building located on the west side of East 105th and Frank Avenue in connection with the Innovation Square Project. west side of East 105th and Frank Avenue in connection with the Innovation Square Project and other associated costs necessary to redevelop the property. Ordinance 8/41/2021 by Councilmembers Conwell, Brancatelli, and Kelly by departmental request authorizing the Commissioner purchases and supplies to sell city-owned property no longer needed for public use located at 10700 Churchill Avenue to the NRP Group or its designee for purposes of implementing the future Churchill Gateway, Gateway Project and authorizing retaining an easement and entering into an easement agreement for the public purpose of vehicular and pedestrian access. Ordinance 8/64/2021 by Councilmembers Bishop and Kelly by departmental request authorizing Director of Public Works to enter into an amendment to a contract with GT Environmental to implement and stabilize accepted recommendations needed to improve efficiency, consistency, and reliable service delivery for residential solid waste and recycling services for a period not to exceed two years. Ordinance 8/66/2021 by Councilmembers Griffin and Kelly by departmental request authorizing Director of Public Safety to apply for and accept a grant from the United States Department of Homeland Security FEMA and Fiscal Year 21 Port Security Grant Program and authorizing the purchase by one or more contracts of one police boat and associated equipment for the Division of Police, Department of Public Safety.
Read the motion to suspend the rules?
By Councilmember Sly that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember Hairston.
Please call the roll.
Kelly, Bishop, Brancatelli, Conwell, Gardner, Gray, Griffin, Hairston, Bashir Jones, Joe Jones, Casey, McCormack, Mooney, Polencik, Santana, Sly, Spencer, 17 yays.
Thank you. Before we call the roll on passage, do you have a comment on one of the ordinances that is being considered on second reading, Councilman?
Yes, Mr. President, I would love to have 8/41-2021. I'd like to be recused from that one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please call the roll on passage.
Kelly, Bishop, Brancatelli, Conwell, Gardner, Gray, Griffin, Hairston, Bashir Jones, Joe Jones, Casey, McCormack, Mooney, Polencik, Santana, Sly, Spencer. On ordinance 5/57/2021, 16 yays, 1 nay. On ordinance 8/41/2021, 16 yays, 0 nays, 1 recusal. On all others, 17 yays, no nays.
Thank you. This will conclude the legislative portion of our agenda. Are there introductions tonight? Are there announcements tonight? Councilwoman Jasmine Santana?
I don't know if this is, thank you. So I don't know if this is announcement, but could I speak on the legislation that was introduced today?
Sure.
Okay, so I am celebrating today, ending council meeting on a positive note. I want to thank all my colleagues who co-sponsored legislation 9/25/2021, which is an ordinance establishing a program to make feminine hygiene products free and accessible in all restrooms at City Hall, Neighborhood Youth Centers, Adult Education Resources, and Recreation Centers. This legislation came about after meeting with a group of teens from school that shared that they had challenges in accessing these products. As you know, women spend about 1325 each month on menstrual products totaling about 6,360 in, in her reproductive lifetime, and if it's your household, President Kelly, that's times four.
Six.
So, so you're welcome.
Much appreciated. You're lying outside of Estbrook Recreation Center.
Yes, we should call this President Kevin Kelly show. I hope that this legislation, really, I really hope this legislation also encourages other public entities and businesses to offer feminine hygiene products at no cost in their restrooms as well. Once again, thank you to the administration, Chief Dumens, for supporting my colleagues who co-sponsored, and Tilly and Jennifer O'Leary, who really worked hard on drafting this legislation. So, thank you, everyone.
Well, thank you for your leadership, Councilwoman. Councilman Conwell or Griffin, who's it? Kev?
I'd like to introduce Director Johnson. He's the president and CEO of Assembly for the Arts.
Welcome.
From New Jersey. Asking to give us a proposal for the arts, and he's new here, and we're expecting you to do great, 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 great things. Thank you very much. Let's give him a round of applause.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Conwell and to Council President. Yes, my name is Jeremy Johnson. I'm the president and CEO of Assembly for the Arts. We are the fairly new umbrella for all of the arts throughout the greater Cleveland region. As you all know, it's a $9.1 billion industry that delivers thousands of jobs to our community and especially to Cleveland. I want to thank this distinguished body for your work in supporting the arts throughout our communities, and we need you to continue to do that. We all know the impact of COVID upon the arts and culture industry was one of the first to shut down, and we're slowly coming back. But we need the support, especially in our communities, our hard-hit communities in all 17 wards, and I spend much of my time in those wards. So, I just want to thank you all for introducing me. We will have work ahead of us as we work throughout our committees, as we work to leverage public funding with private funding, and we want to thank you all for your support. Council President, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We'll just kind of bring all this together. Any other introductions, announcements, miscellaneous? Councilman McCormick, and then I'll go to Councilman Polencik.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President, and CEO Johnson is a proud Ward 3 resident, so I just want to give him a shout out on that. Always proud to have stellar people in our ward. So, Mr. President, I just rise today. You heard Councilman Casey speak last week about the more alike than different mural that was being unveiled last week. I had the honor of attending that unveiling with him, and again, as someone from a family that has a family member who's differently abled, it's just an incredible, spectacular mural, the biggest in Ohio, I think. So it's the largest in Ohio at 161 in Puritus. They get that right? So I just want to, Mr. President, encourage all of our colleagues, if you're in the area, 161st Imperitus and Ward 16, check out this mural. It is spectacular. It was painted by community members of all abilities, and it is truly a, I would say, a landmark in Cleveland, celebrating our community. So if you're around the 160s Imperitus, you cannot miss it. It's right on the, on Puritus, and I just want to thank Councilman Casey. I was really touched by the event last week and just want to call you out and everybody that was involved in putting that together. It's beautiful.
Councilman Polencik.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my honorable colleagues, Madam Clerk, I too want to just commend my colleague, Councilman Casey, for a wonderful job of what he did in really promoting the needs that are out there in our communities, retaining some young people that have handicaps. Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you for the, giving me an opportunity to attend the neighborhood meeting tonight in my ward. That's why I was late, a safety meeting. Mr. Chairman, I wanted to rise and say this on the floor. In the, in the days that we are dealing with collectively as a body and as a community as it pertains to issue pertaining to public safety, police, it is so, it was so pleasant to walk into a meeting tonight with at least 60 people, if maybe probably more, I was trying to count as I was standing up in front, who not only are proud to live in the city of Cleveland, but also are supportive of our men and women in the Cleveland Police Department. And that has to be said more often and more and more often in our city. These are homeowners. These are people who pay a lot of taxes in an area in my ward up near the lake, and they've been experiencing some problems with people trying to rifle through cars and enter in the vehicles, et cetera. And at the end of the day, they made it very clear to me, and the commander who was there from the 5th District tonight, Commander Morris, who, by the way, lives in the community, lives in, in Ward 8, lives in the 5th District, that they're not here to vilify the police department, they're here to support the men and women in blue. And it is so, it is so refreshing to hear that. And I wanted to get up on the floor tonight and really thank the members of the East Shore Park Club for their commitment to our city, to our community, and, you know, we all realize we have issues. There have been some serious issues within the Division of Police over the years. You cannot deny that fact. But we also cannot deny the fact that the majority of men and women in this city are working on our behalf every day, the men and women in blue, and we need to acknowledge that every chance we can. And it was so, again, so impressive and so gratifying to hear how appreciative they are, the people in our community, to the men and women in blue of the 5th District for serving our community, and their support of, what's the bottom line? It's not about to defund the police. They want more police in the street. They want the positions backfilled. They want, they want accountability. They want professional conduct. They want transparency, but they want police officers working their street. So to my brothers and sisters, as we go forward the remainder of this year and into a new administration, that's got to be our number one priority, our number one priority in the city, to make sure those positions are backfilled and that we have accountability, professional conduct, and training that our citizens are demanding and expecting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hey, Councilman? Councilman Charles Sly?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I share the congratulations to Councilman Casey in Ward 16 about the new mural. I'm already speaking with Councilman Casey about how to expand it next year. It's right on the border of our two wards, and then the underpass creates an opportunity to make it even larger than it already is. But I rise tonight to talk about curbside recycling. It is probably the most common question that I hear from residents as I'm out in the neighborhood, and to this council and to you, Mr. President, I'm really concerned on Friday, we have the deadline for the opt-in of recycling, and we heard today in a committee meeting, we've received information from the administration that opt-in rates are pretty low, and none of us anticipated there was going to be 100% opt-in. However, I don't think communication has been where it's needed to be. Council has been putting out this information as best as it can, but we heard today that the administration put out a mailer last week. In a previous committee meeting, we had suggested hangers on carts, we had suggested robocalls. I suggested putting signs on garbage and recycling trucks as they circulate the community. The truth is, the residents don't know about this, and not only are we denying them the opportunity to participate, and if they, they miss the deadline, they wouldn't be able to opt, they could opt in but not begin to participate until 2022, but we're also talking about beginning next week, taking away the blue cans for people who haven't opted in. And I can just say, I'm a very busy guy, I've got two kids at home in diapers, and if I just lost one of my cans one day, it'd be chaotic. And I think that what we're walking ourselves into is people not having enough space in the remaining container, being told they have to lease another one when they used to have two, and it's going to exacerbate the illegal dumping issues we see across many parts of our city. So I'm asking the administration to reconsider this October 22 deadline. I think that we need more time and we need more effective communication out from the administration to our residents about how to opt into this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Bashir Jones, did you have your mic up? Okay. Councilman Doug?
Thank you so much, Mr. President. First, I want to congratulate Councilwoman Santana. That's a huge thing, you know? You just never know what people are dealing with. I had the chance to go to India, and in India, in the slum villages there, they have a big issue with young girls not being able to go to school because they don't have the necessary cleaning, you know, you know what I'm talking about? You get, you get what I'm saying? Okay, thank you. And, and personal hygiene product. I have a daughter, too, by the way, who's just told me her stomach hurts, so you can tell how I'm feeling right now. But anyway, but this is a big thing. This is turning words into actions, words into actions. And sometimes, being here, you know, we can make the mistakes of, of talking, talking, talking without action following up, without action following up. And if we're truly serious about wanting to make this city, to take this city off of the list of being the most impoverished, we have to make sure that this is a place where everyone has access to resources. You know, my good friend Norm Edwards has been for 30-plus years fighting at the table, making sure, striving to make sure that black and brown people have an opportunity to have a part of this economic pie. And I think this is very, very important because we can say anything. I mean, we can get up and lead marches and get on microphones and say anything, but if we don't put the money where our mouth is, all of it is, is just words, is just, you know, something for the camera. But people will really be impacted by what Councilwoman Santana did, what you have done, Council President, what you will do. So what I'm saying to you and to me is that we have to make sure specifically you have black people in this city who have been doing business in this city and never have had the opportunity to get a, a real piece of the pie. You know, it's hypocritical for us to talk about the crime of young men and women on corners of Cleveland, but not discuss the crime of not being able to have a seat at the table and take a piece of the pie. So I stand with Norm Edwards. This issue with Sharon Williams is a real issue, and any institution that does not want to make sure that black people get what they deserve in a majority-black city is a problem. And, you know, I'm not going to allow suburban, anyone from the suburbs, or any neighborhood that look like the suburbs, to tell me how I should feel about anything that happens amongst my community. And let me make it clear and put it on the record. Public comment has been something we've been working on for much longer than many groups that got involved. It's been a conversation that we've been working on for a long time, and anyone that's being truthful will know that it didn't just happen last year, but we were discussing it years prior. So why is this important? It's because we have to be very careful of the loud voices that are here for a moment, but not really addressing the real issues that's happening in our communities. I wish, like my friend Councilman Sly was talking about, you know, the garbage cans, like, I wish that was my major issue. My major issue is that we are burying black bodies almost every single day. There's certain issues in certain places that some can't even compare to. So I'll close with this. I'm making the transition. Mansfield Frazier, he's a person that was an example in this city of turning words into actions, and our neighborhood has been devastated by his loss. I'd be reaching out to you, Mr. President. I would love for us to consider as a body, turning a day into Mansfield Frazier Day, as well as turning East 66 into Mansfield Frazier Way. I know I have a lot of, a lot of street signs that I did in Ward 7, but I'm hoping that that we can do one more. It's been a pleasure, you know, being with this body and, and fighting for what's right, and I, and I hope that we can continue to fight for what's right and, and turn our words into actions and not be moved by the sway of emotions of, of, of people who don't understand where we come from.
Councilman Joe Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to talk about a member who graced this hall and was the Finance Chairman on City Council, some who, like Mike Polencik may remember, he's still alive, but he's going through some tough times, is Bill Patman. So if you have Bill Patman's number, reach out to him. He's a little bit under the weather, so to speak, and I'm quite sure it'd be good if you know him to reach out to him in this particular time. Also, I'd like to take the opportunity to agree with, you know, both Mike Polencik as well as Charlie Sly in their comments today. I think they were very thoughtful, one of them dealing with garbage collection in our city. One of the things that I could always, you know, actually mark my clock to was the garbage collection pickup time, and over the last several years, we've seen a decline in our community in terms of garbage collection. What we have now is something that my colleague Sly talked about, is these brochures being mailed out into the neighborhood. A lot of our citizens are confused by it, they don't understand it, and, Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully ask the administration, if this council can put together a resolution, in telling the administration that we don't want that program to move forward as it is right now, until we have more communications to our public so they can really understand what opting is, 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 and what opting out is. Because a lot of them don't understand what's actually happening, and we've, we've been fielding phone calls in our office all day long concerning the particular. fielding phone calls in our office all day long concerning a particular issue. So I would suggest that we hold up on that program. It would be the best thing for this council. If we don't hold up on it, it's going to be a nightmare for us. So we need to do a better job in how we communicate that, and I think that that would help us. Another issue in garbage collection is there was a time when we would load the entire front up and the garbage, garbage collecting guys would come and get it all. Now what we have is these cans and we have a certain period of time that we can put the garbage out in the first of the month. And that's not happening in an efficient way. We have a lot of garbage and debris that are left behind and most, nine times out of 10, that debris is winding up on the corners, it's winding up on alleyways, and it's making our city look ugly. We need to find a way to address some of the issues of collection so that when we're getting out there, we're getting, we're actually getting that stuff up and we're putting it in the way that it ought to be. Because right now, my neighborhood has not looked so messy as it does right now with mattresses all over the place. And I'm quite sure many of you've seen mattresses all over the place. We need to do a better job in terms of figuring out how to deal with that. And then lastly, you know, I agree with Mike Polencik about our police officers. Over 20 years ago, I stood here, actually on that microphone, and talked about the crossroads of the city of Cleveland and the importance of trying to keep our police manpower intact, that we have a choice and decision. And if we move in one direction, we are and we have moved unfortunately in the wrong direction. Now we have crime at a rate that we haven't seen the likes of. I can't even compare the crime in our city to the 1980s. This is the worst that we've ever seen it in my neighborhood. And I'm told from my own commander that our neighborhood is not doing as bad as some of the other parts of the city of Cleveland. And I said to him in response, Mr. President, that if that's the case, we're in trouble. We're in trouble. And when I have citizens that tell me that we're moving out of the neighborhood because our house not only got broken in once, but it's got broken in twice, but it's three times it's been broken into, that's an issue. We need to do something about using these opera funds to hire at least another 100 police officers, if not 150 more police officers, and put them into the streets. We need to figure it out quickly. Because for me, as an elected official, and I'll wind it up, Mr. President, is this. Our goals as a council should be retaining our population and working to build and bring in more population in the city of Cleveland. That should be what we should strive for here as a council, how we increase our city and how we move forward as a city. And one of the ways of being able to do that is to keep our citizens safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Madam Clerk, do we have any absences?
No.
Okay. This council meeting is adjourned. Our next regular meeting will be held on October 25th, 2021.